All right, welcome to our city council meeting for tonight, September 8th, 2021. We will have a invocation by Tyler Romerl and then the pledge of allegiance led by Jason Norris.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the blessing it is to be able to gather this evening. We're thankful for the city we live in, for the leaders that we have and for their guidance and directing the citizens in the development of this city, and we ask you to bless them with the wisdom and the guidance they need as they continue to make decisions and guide this city in the future. We're thankful for the country we live in, for the constitutional rights that we have, for the freedoms that affords us, and for the opportunity to play a role in the political system. Father, we're thankful for the community that we have, for the friendships and service that have been offered to each other over these past several months. Father, we are mindful of those that have been affected, both in our community and worldwide, by devastating natural disasters. We ask you to bless those that they can recover, that those that are well off can reach out and assist, or they can better each other as we work together, and we say the same name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now move on to the agenda order approval. I would like to make a note that Councilman Melling is participating via phone, right there by Scott and Ron.
Are you there, Councilman Melling?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, we'll move on to our agenda order approval. We had one item that was supposed to be on the consent agenda that got put on the action agenda, that was item number five.
So, so I would move that we approve the agenda, moving item five to the consent agenda, and then approve everything else that's shown.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move to council business.
Mayor, I'm sure that someone notices this, but I just want to make sure that we have very wide streets in Cedar City, but obviously somebody saw fit to cut a corner a little too close at 400 North Main and, 400 North and Main Street, because the light pole there by Mountain America is bent quite a bit leaning in towards the parking lot of Mountain America. So I want to make sure that we get that looked at and addressed, so it doesn't come over.
I noticed that this morning, I was going to talk to Ryan about it tomorrow afternoon.
Great. And then, just secondly, this is just a shout out to our Parks Division people, I mean, the flowers on Main Street and how Main Street looks, I just was driving over here for the meeting, and it just looks beautiful, and I see them out there watering every day, twice a day, and I just want to thank them and for the things, because it makes a difference. So, just a shout out.
Just one quick item. On Ridge Road, as you go up the hill from Center Street or University Boulevard, on the left, not even a block up the hill, there is a house that has weeds that are as big as some of my, some of my trees. So, I should have made note of the exact address, but it's pretty obvious, so if we can get, get somebody out there to...
I think we got a nuisance complaint on that Tuesday.
Okay.
This, either this past Tuesday or the last Tuesday, and the police department's aware of that.
Yeah, I brought it up a few weeks ago, and I wonder, I was going to ask, Craig and I were talking before the meeting, he was going to bring it up again, and wondered if he was retaliating from a letter he'd gotten previous, decided to grow the weeds just to show us, or, I think, because it wasn't quite that bad before.
Yeah, I think they've been fertilized.
Yeah, something, they're huge.
Two weeks ago.
This rain has sprout the weeds out.
Well, that's true, that is true, but it's, it's really a nuisance to that part of the city.
Another question on Ridge Road, up, up a little higher, there is a sinkhole in the road, are we addressing that or taking care of it, or?
Robbie, you want to fill that out?
As I came down the hill to council, I noticed I started to bump on the other side of the road where it's not sinking. What do we got going on?
Hi, good evening, Robbie Mitchell. So, we had a water leak there, last Wednesday, we went and we pulled a new connection into that lot. We filled it with flow, flow will fill which is wet sand, we put the plate on it, and then the sinkhole developed on the other side of it. So, on the flow, we usually let that cure for at least a week to get all the water out of it and to settle. So, either tomorrow or the first thing next week, we're hoping to jump on it tomorrow, we're going to come off the canyon for a little bit, we'll go up there, re-cut that, and then patch that hole and get the plate off of there.
I know you're busy, I hate to even bring it up, I figured you had it covered, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other items? Just so that all the community that's here or hopefully watching and counsel are, Run the Canyon Half Marathon is on Saturday, and so that always causes a few angry individuals that are trying to get up the canyon, the canyon will be closed, they're really early morning hours, as soon as it's safe, they open it as always, but that will take place at, and I know all of the council has been invited, at least I'm pretty sure, and others to the September 11th event, SUU on Friday. SUU did start classes today, and so there will be a number of very unfamiliar drivers in our city over the next couple days as they try to navigate, not know, knowing where they're going. And then, in addition to the half marathon at the Veterans Park that morning, the Rotary in conjunction with Cedar City Events is doing a 9/11 moment of silence for every, for each of the different planes and everything that happened, and that will be starting at 8:20, and it will tie into the half marathon as well.
And that's at the Veterans Park?
Yes. And where those are both connected with the city, I wanted to make sure that you were aware, if somebody had questions, why those roads around there and why the canyon was closed.
Thank you.
And we will move to staff comments.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. Just a reminder, I don't know if you've seen, but there's a group this Friday that will be putting together a First and Second Amendment Assembly, meeting at Cow Ranch at 6:00 PM. They'll be armed, exercising their Second Amendment right, and their intent is to peaceably assemble down Main Street to 200 North, over to the Veterans Park, and then have a small program, and then march back. So they've met with us, they're trying to take every precaution and do this responsibly. We'll have officers there, we do worry a little bit about potential counter protests and things of that nature, although we have no information to suggest that at this point, but we are aware and working on helping them with that, so didn't want to have that come up without you knowing, or if you had any concerns, we're on top of that, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One other that relates to you, Chief, and I know I've mentioned this, some others had said, we have a lot of yards, yard sale signs out again, beginning of the, end of the year, beginning of the school year, we tend to get a lot of those, can we enforce that?
Yeah, we can get on top of that. I've noticed that many are trying to do a better job of putting those on boxes and not on signs, which we appreciate, but, but there's still some that are, that need to be educated, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there's lots of mattress signs and home financing.
Right.
You can make a million dollars a week if you call this number.
I can just stay home.
Right, are there any other staff comments? Okay, then we will move on to our business agenda with the public comment portion, if there's anyone that would like to have a general public comment, if you want to come up, Tom?
My name is Tom Willis, and I would really be, when I, as I first start out, I'd really like to thank the city council and Ken Nelson and Chris for the dock that you guys installed at the lake, it is awesome, so many families are coming there, and the kids can be on there and catching bluegill and little things, and it's just, it's turned out perfect, and I appreciate the city council approving that and the work that Ken and Chris did on getting that, those quotes for that. But yesterday afternoon, or around 1:00, I had gone over to the lake, I live right there by the Aquatic Center, and the DWR was stocking 5,000 trout in the lake, and those that have been to the lake recently know that it's been really, really low, and I know we, you guys had the pumps on since Friday at least through Monday, and it brought the level up maybe one and a half, two feet, but the lake is still about four feet low, I think. But I went back an hour later and the trout were already dying, I called Richard Hempworth with the DWR, he came and looked and said, yep, they're dying, they showed up this morning, took eight bags, trash bags with trout that they had scooped up already, and approximately 200, this afternoon, there's probably another 100. And I did talk to Robbie last night, and he did get the pump going on again, and before I came to the meeting, the pump's running again. I don't, it's not the city's fault, it's DWR's for putting all those fish in at this time, but I didn't know if there's anything that could be done, I know water has come in through that, the concrete pipe on the north, if there's anything that can be done, this is the last stocking of the year, normally they stock in November, but they moved up, I, I don't know if it's because of the drought, but it, and these are big trout, so I just wanted to plead with the city to see if there's anything that they can do to bring that water level up. I know it irrigates all the, the schools and the parks from the lake all the way down towards the cemetery.
Robbie or Kenny, do you want to further address, I mean, we knew Leisure Services, they knew and had communicated with DWR that this wasn't a good time, or a preferable time, or when we would prefer them to stock the fish, and it tended, it happened anyway, and DWR knew that it would result in fish dying.
Was DWR, was it like Mr. Willis suggested, that because of the drought, or were they just doing it because it would fit their schedule?
That'll be a Kenny question.
I know Richard Hempworth with the DWR said that the hatchery called them and said that we need to get the fish out of the hatchery, I don't know why they, I would have thought they could at least waited another week or so for the temperatures to come down.
Yeah.
Kenny Nelson, Leisure Services, so talking with DWR, that's the, they manage the lake, right, so they manage all the fish in the lake, that's not our concern, or they're, they don't want to step in on their toes either, so my question to them is why not wait till, they usually stock it in late October, November, and he said, well, they have to come out of the hatchery, so it's either now or you're not going to get stocked, and so they made that call and decided to put them in there, and that's where we are.
May, may not make a lot of difference if they all die.
Right, I mean, if, and my idea, you know, two, three weeks would have made a huge difference in, in our temperature, and they're coming from the hatchery that's in Hatch, which is, I think Tom said, is 56-degree water, so it's quite a shock when they get thrown in our, our water. So, Rob can speak to the, to the water levels, we'll continue, they're going to continue to come each morning to clean up, we'll clean up the best we can as the, as the fish die and go to the shore, and we're not just going to leave them, but it creates a lot of questions and concerns, so we just wanted to put that out and so you guys are aware.
Thank you.
But it's not a water, we had somebody email us about it, I had, had somebody thinking that there was something in the water that was doing all of this, you can come up, and it's just that it's too warm and...
Robbie Mitchell, Water Department again. So, yeah, what that is, is the lake, when it's clear full, is 18 feet deep, that's the deepest end, so it tapers all the way up, so it doesn't take long for that water to get hot.
Yeah.
As far as the cement structure on the north side, that's culinary water, so in the first of the spring or the fall, when we can, and we're not, the demand's not high in town, we can add culinary into the pond and help bring that up. Right now, our demand is still up because of the temperatures to where we don't, I can't afford to open that up to fill it. We did, we let it, it got lower because the power company reads that meter every month, and every time I fire that well, it costs me anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 just to push a button. So we were waiting until last Wednesday when they read the meter, soon as they read it, we fired the well, it's been running ever since. The bad thing is, is that water is excess water, what the schools don't use, so it comes up, it goes down, it comes up, it goes down, so since we've started, it has come up two feet. So we are, we are gaining ground, it's just going to take a little while, but if the demand goes down within the city, we will be able to open up that north system and put some culinary water into it, which will help it out.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robbie.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Garth Green, this Saturday is 9/11, and I'm, I am sponsoring a Freedom Festival, it's at the city park, it starts at 10:00 in the morning, it runs until 3:00 in the afternoon. The program will be, will start at 10 minutes to 12 with a video, and then, then the flags and the so forth will happen right at 12 o'clock, and then there will be a few speakers, it should be over in an hour. There, there are, there's no cost to anyone on this, there's food provided, there's the inflatables, you all can get in if you can.
You might get in, we may not get out.
Might get in, might not get out, you might get, yes, pretty competitive in there, I understand. There will be a dunking palm in the afternoon, it tells you, they told me that it hurts when you hit the bottom, and I said I wasn't going, Tyler said, well, at his height, he would just bob. So, we'll, we'll see how that all goes, it, it should be a lot of fun, we have Chanel singing in the, in, starting 11 o'clock Saturday morning, and she'll sing for an hour, and she'll do the Star Spangled Banner, and she'll also do a tribute to the military service, the different, the different ones, there'll be speakers, and then Bren Hill will take over at 1:00, and he'll sing for an hour, and then there'll be, you all can sing from, from 2:00 till 3:00, or from 10:00 till 11:00, there's no singers, if you all want to volunteer, we'll have a microphone there for you. Craig thinks that Terry might like that part, is that right? Anyway, any questions about the event? It should be, should be a good time.
Thanks.
Good evening, Tom Chet, I'd just like to make note, we have some beautiful artwork again, and when the walls are bare, I feel kind of lonely, so this is quite, quite attractive artwork, so thank, please thank the, the artists for, for the wonderful views.
Are there any other general public comments? Okay, then we will move on to our public consent agenda, item number one, approval of minutes dated August 18th and 25th, 2021, approved bills dated September 3rd, 2021, proposal from Civil Science in the amount of $38,792 for the design of the Cedar City Pickleball Court Complex, and item number five, consider entering a development agreement with Choice Builders LLC on 60 acres of property located in the vicinity of 2,700 South, 2,800 South, 2,900 South Tippel Road.
Move to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we will now move to our action agenda with item number four, an ordinance repelling Cedar City Ordinance Number 0623-21-1, annexing 40.02 acres of property in the vicinity of 2,300 West, 3,000 North.
So this is just the ordinance that would formalize the discussion we've had over the last several weeks, instructing staff to start that process again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call, starting with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Councilman Melling?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved, five to zero. Item number six, a resolution revising the city engineering standards for waterline material. And I think we're going to have, Jonathan can introduce this part.
May I have a representative from WL Plastics, Dustin Langston, he's here to give us a presentation about HDPE pipe, so we're grateful that he's been able to join us tonight.
Thank you for the invitation. Yep, that's the one.
I'm going to make you say your name.
That is totally fine, I was almost there.
All right.
My name's Dustin Langston, I'm the Vice President of Engineering and Quality Assurance at WL Plastics. WL Plastics is the largest manufacturer of high-density polyethylene pipe in the country, we have eight plants across the country, making almost 800 million pounds of polyethylene pipe every year. The water market is not the main market we sell into, the main markets we sell into are oil and gas gathering, it's going to be gas distribution, all the yellow pipe that goes to your house, a lot of that's being actually replaced with black pipe with yellow stripes nowadays, and mining, industrial, irrigation, really pretty much, if there's piping in it, you can use polyethylene. So, next slide. So today, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about how the pipe's installed, a lot of detail about really fusion and things like that, I want to give you more of a history of where polyethylene came from, why it exists, what the benefits are, and kind of where we fall in the market against the other materials. And I'm going to do this completely backwards of what I usually do, I'm going to tell you all the bad stuff first, because the bad stuff is the whole reason I'm here, is because of chlorine in Washington County. So we're going to start with what is polyethylene, so polyethylene is a semi-crystalline polymer, it actually has a crystal structure and an amorphous region, which means it's super tough, but it's also incredibly flexible. And so, in a water system, we're not really so much worried about brute strength like ductile iron, for example, we're worried about flexibility, can we move with the ground, can we handle surge, things like that in a water system where you see a lot of variability across your city, you want one pipe material that can handle all of those, whether it's a hot zone for soil, whether it is a ground movement zone, I actually grew up on Roundtree, which is right up by the fault line, and I was told my whole entire childhood, you're going to have that big earthquake someday, and polyethylene pipe is absolutely the pipe material for size.
But please do not wish that upon us.
No, and after 2020, I think we're good for a while, I think we're good. Next slide though, please, Jonathan. So, let's talk failure. There are three types of failure modes when it comes to polyethylene pipe. First is a burst, a physical rupturing of the pipe, this is incredibly difficult to do, typical DR11 pipe that's rated for 200 PSI, takes over 800 PSI to burst it, to physically rupture that pipe. So that's four times the pressurizing of the pipe, incredibly difficult to get to those kinds of pressures, to be able to cause a stage one, or a, yeah, a stage one type failure. Stage two type failure is a long-term failure, so I actually watched the video of last week's meeting, where the ductile iron guy said, oh, what was his wording exactly, stress is corrosion to plastics, and I was like, oh, that sounds incredibly horrible, but it's actually pretty accurate, because all these pipe materials are going to fail in some way or another, and you just need to understand what that failure looks like and how long projected away will that failure take place. And when polyethylene first came out as a material, stage two was how that pipe was going to fail. These are called slow crack growth failures, they're small little pinholes, small little slits, and that was going to be the failure method for polyethylene that was made 50 years ago, okay? This no longer exists as a failure method for polyethylene pipe. Back then, we have the slow crack growth test to evaluate, this is called the Pennsylvania notch test, and back then, we were getting maybe 10 hours of resistance to this failure type. The materials we use today have over 10,000 hours of slow crack growth resistance, so these two failure methods, stage one, stage two, have gone away, that's not really a failure method for polyethylene pipe anymore. And so now we move into stage three, which is, which is oxidation, which is the whole reason I am here today, to talk about chlorine and oxidation from chemical attack. Next slide, please. Now, this is actually just a quick little video, picture, I mean, of what that looks like on a molecular level of a stage one and a stage two, the stage one is actually tearing apart that crystalline structure, and a stage two is actually unraveling or unravelling the side chain branching of the molecule, so that's what causes slow crack growth versus a ductile tear. Next slide. So chlorine, this came to our attention about 15 years ago now, this is about 2005, 2006, when the city of Tucson and the city of Las Vegas started having service tubing failures, so we're talking less than three-inch diameters, they started having chlorine attack failures. And we were only seeing these across the country in very hot climates, where you didn't have a frost line. And so in Vegas, for example, we had some of these subpipes buried six inches below ground, some of them right under an asphalt driveway. And in situations like that, when you get into the summer months, the water temperature in that pipe could be up to 120 degrees. And so that coupled with chlorine created premature oxidative failures, and it only, we only have experienced these failures across the entire country in very hot climates where there is no frost line. So, when we gathered this information, and what we needed to do then was develop a test method to figure out, hey, how can we recreate this in a laboratory situation, scenario? And that is actually the bottom right, that's the Jana Laboratory, impact of potable water disinfectants on PE pipe, that is that study, we came up with a, a test method to evaluate existing polyethylene materials, all the materials were tested, they, we had a baseline of what the chlorine resistance was going to be of the existing materials, and that gives a baseline for how we can improve. And so about 2008 to 2010, we came out with what are called chlorine categorization, so you have a CC1, which is your base, that's, you know, a typical city like Cedar City, where you have cold water temperatures, deep burials, you know, you're still going to get 50 to 100-year service life out of that, for a CC1 in a place like St. George, that might only be good for 15 to 25 years. And so as an industry, we decided, hey, this is not going to be okay, if we can't sell all of our pipe across the entire country, and we have to isolate and not sell into these hot temperatures, that's not going to be a good situation, like we need to...
Dustin, what's a hot temperature climate?
So anything that doesn't have a frost line, so St. George, for example, they literally don't have a frost line, they, they don't have a requirement that says you must bury 36 inches, I believe, as Cedar City's. In different places in the country, it can be five feet, we sell a lot of pipe into Alaska, it's eight to 12 feet. So, those are hot climates, anywhere that doesn't have a frost line, that they're not worried about frost. I think as a country, we might be getting to the point where everyone needs to develop a frost line, because Texas, that ice storm ruined almost the whole country's economy for one state.
That's part of why I was wondering.
Yeah, oh, and we'll get into all the benefits of polyethylene and how it could save the day in Texas, but that's a, that's a different story.
Had different weather around.
But, okay, so, so we've now, we found the problem, we've evaluated the problem, we've come up with a test method, we have a test method, approved ASTM test method for categorization of these materials, and then the entire industry came together, all the resin manufacturers, Dow Chemical, Lion Delbasal, Chevron Phillips, Ineos, and they increased the oxidative resistance of all their materials. So we went in five years' time from everything being a CC1 material, which is the lowest categorization, to a CC3 in five years, and you no longer can even get a CC1 material for the past six years, they don't even exist anymore. Everything is now a CC3, the highest resistance to chlorine, which means even in a hot climate where you have high water temperatures, and with high water temperatures comes higher chlorine, because high temperatures breed more bacteria, which you have to counter with more chlorine, as long as you're running your water system in EPA guidelines, even at high temperatures, you have 100-year design life, even on the small tubing sizes now, with all polyethylene pipe across the board. So, that's the big... So, that's the big hurrah, you know, the big push that we made over the last 15 years. But, everything that you have up in front of you now is all of the documents that have chlorine categorizations fully incorporated into them. So, all the American Waterworks Association standards, whether it's for pipe, or installation, or design, everything here has required chlorine categorization of three, which is the maximum. On top of that, I'm actually a representative today of, I'm not just talking on behalf of WL Plastics, I'm talking on behalf of the industry. I'm actually on the Board of Directors for the Plastics Pipe Institute. The Plastics Pipe Institute covers all plastic piping material. So the PVC guy that was here last week, I'm on the Board of Directors over their materials. Over polyethylene, polypropylene, polyamides, nylons, any plastic piping material falls under that umbrella. The reports you see in front of you, TN 49 and TN 44, are the design criteria for using polyethylene in high chlorine applications. So, again, if you want to read these, I'll send you links to all of them, they're all free, we don't charge for any of our design manuals or anything, so let me know. It's a good read, they're not that long either, though, it's not bad. Next slide? So just back up a little bit more. So, I am a self-proclaimed pipe historian. Okay, so I've been in pipe, I saw that look, that's a real thing. I've been doing, in the pipe industry now for 16 years, and I have consumed everything, every pipe material, anything I can get on my hands-on, I'll read about it. So I actually brought you a sample to look at, while I give you a history. We'll pass that around, I'll get to it here in a minute. So this is a little plaque that I had made for ductile iron. Ductile iron, as they said, while they were here last week, they've been around for hundreds of years, which is not a lie, but it's not true. So ductile iron has only been around since 1966, and that's the latest iteration and wall thickness of iron pipe. And so what I'm sending around right now is the wall thickness of iron pipe over the last 200 years, okay? This is a sample I'm sending around. The very thinnest part is today's ductile iron, which is 3/8 of an inch wall thickness. This is literally the thinnest they can make it, that's still tappable, okay? So, when they say they have pipes that's been in the ground for 200 years, it was an inch thick. The stuff now is 3/8 of an inch thick. Of course, it's been around for 100 years, you know? And cast iron, chemistry-wise, it didn't corrode anyway, so cast iron was actually a pretty good pipe material. Ductile iron, we'll get into it. But again, all three materials, PVC, polyethylene, ductile iron, they were all commercialized within a couple years of each other. Every one of them had an ASTM standard, or sorry, AWWA standard, within two years of each other. So we've been around the block for the same amount of time. But polyethylene, we weren't a bell and spigot joint, we were a welded-fused joint. And so we didn't really think that the water market would accept us, because it's a little bit more of a step, it's a little bit more of a process. But when you do it, you have a leak-free joint that is as strong as the pipe itself. PVC, on the other hand, had a bell and spigot joint. Well, whether the pipe material has a bell and spigot joint, iron pipes. So they went after the water market, we went after everything that was steel. Gas distribution, oil and gas gathering, mining, tailings, for example, corrosive applications, and in the last 50 years, plastics have dominated the market. So now, in my markets that I sell into mostly, which is gas and oil, energy production, we're 95% of the market. PVC is about 75% of the water market, maybe 70, but probably about 75 now, of water and sewer combined. Ductile iron, smaller. HDP pipe, we're about 10% on a good day. So we're a smaller player, but we've only really started to get into the water market the last five years that we've been really pushing it, because we've been so busy in other markets. But we feel that we have a better cog, or whatever you want to call it, a better product for water, especially in today, where water has become such a hot topic, especially in the desert states like Utah. Next slide, please. So, now, actually, why do you use polyethylene? Mainly, it's leak-free, it doesn't corrode, same as PVC, C factor of 150, doesn't corrode, doesn't tuberculate, you don't get anything growing on the inside of the pipe, reduce maintenance, there's nothing to maintain, there's no gaskets, there's no bolted joints that corrode, there's really nothing to maintain. Long service life, so we do claim, we were actually the first pipe material out there to claim the 100-year life, and then everybody else kind of hopped on board, once we made the claim. With all the testing we have today, really, we're looking at 200, 250 years of service life, maybe longer. So it's a very long-lived product. And the big thing I'm going to talk about today is, we're tough, ductile, and flexible, which is not what you're used to hearing about when you think of PVC and ductile iron, because they're all about strength, and we're all about flexibility. So, next slide? HDP pipe is available from half-inch, you know, for your service tubing sizes, all the way up to 120-inch in diameter, and that's solid wall pressure pipe, all the way up to 10-foot in diameter. Pressure ratings, as far as American Waterworks Association goes, is from 335 PSI DR7 down to DR 325, which is 65 PSI. And, thank you. Again, HDP pipe is not bell and spigot jointed, it's not bolted together, it is welded, it's heat-welded together. And that's just a very easy process, depending on the size of pipe. It can be a mechanical process, where you're actually joining them physically yourself, or it's a hydraulic process, where it's clamped into a large machine and hydraulically moved around and heated. And it's a simple process, you clamp the pipe in, you face it off to make sure you have nice square clean ends, and then you put a heater plate between the two pipe ends, melt it at 400 degrees, remove the heater plate, bring the two pipes together, and now they're one monolithic piece of pipe that has no actual joints, because the joint is as strong as the pipe itself.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
I know we went through all of this when I toured WL. I just can't remember, do, would we have to purchase the equipment of-
Yes.
-different size of pipe, or now do you have plates that fit the-
Yes, we do. So, one machine will usually do a range from, let's say, two inches to 12 inches, that would be one machine. The next machine up would maybe go from eight inches to 18 inches. The next machine would go from 16 to 28, or 30-inch. There's a lot of customization, depending on what sizes you're mostly using. But if you're getting into plastic pipe, and it's introductory, you're just playing with it, you're going to really, really be doing 12-inch in depth.
How many machines do you essentially need for-
So it's just the one machine?
Just the one?
Yeah. So once you have the one machine, it comes with everything you need, it comes with all your clamps for the different pipe sizes, for diameters, it comes with a heater plate, it comes with a facing tool, like that's all included in the machine. Yeah. And one of these machines for a 12-inch is going to run $40,000 to $50,000 for one size. There's a couple places in town that rent the smaller ones, I think. Sorry, is it Rob? You guys have had some experience with poly, right, before? Did you rent those machines, or borrow them maybe from Washington County?
Um, we borrowed, well, when I rented out, I rented out the pipe and the machine, so it's included in my inventory.
Yeah. And a lot of distributors actually have them to rent out, instead of, you know, actually purchasing and keeping them on hand. If you're doing a lot of polyethylene, like Washington County was, and still does a little, they have a lot of their own machines.
I just know that was the, one of the things we talked about when we were on our tour.
Yeah, and the contractor training as well, you know, luckily we do the training here onsite in Cedar City, so that's easy for contractors that are local to come out and get trained on these pieces of equipment. But it's definitely different than just, you know, stabbing a piece of pipe together. So, yeah, thank you for the question. Next slide, please. So, talking about ground movement, we talked about this a little bit ago, and we don't have a lot of earthquakes here, we have a lot of little ones, you know? Twos, threes. I've never felt one, by the way, I still just think it's- I'm knocking on wood, alright? But, there's a lot of reasons that ground moves that's not earthquakes. There's freeze thaw, uh, next slide, please. There's freeze thaw, oh, go ahead. Freeze thaw, there is water saturation, whether you have your, a lot of snow melt off and your water table comes up, and then it dries out again. Drought is another reason ground moves. There's a lot of reasons for pipe and ground, and infrastructure underneath our feet, to move. And HDP pipe is the number one material when it comes to ground movement, and not coming apart. Try and play this video, let's see if it actually worked for you. This is a study, oh, no, go back. There we go. This is a study that was done by Cornell University, where they installed a 16-inch piece of pipe in a trench box, and buried it to specification, you know, exactly what you'd do in the field, and then they shifted it on a lateral shift four feet, over a 35-foot length. Go to the next slide. Go ahead and play that one. You can see the strain sensors on the inside, you can see this pipe shift. That pipe also had a fusion in the very middle of it. This did not fail the pipe, this did not even come close to the strain allowances of HDP pipe. And that was a four-foot lateral shift in a restrained piece of 16-inch. There's a reason the gas companies use this pipe, it's because if there's earthquakes, if there's natural disasters, it does not come apart, it does not leak. If you have a leak in gas pipe, people get hurt. If we start treating our water the same we will treat our gas, we'd be using a whole lot more polyethylene in these systems. Go ahead, next slide? So HDP pipe also does not break with freeze thaw. It can completely take a full freeze, which is a 7% expansion of diameter, and it can freeze completely solid and expand with the ice. It will not break from freeze thaw. Next slide? HDP pipe is, go ahead, hit it next a couple times. HDP pipe is a ductile material, all the way down to temperatures of negative 130 degrees Fahrenheit. It does not act as a glassous material, or a brittle material, until negative 130. Next, a few more times. Yeah, so the picture right there was actually negative 40 in North Dakota.
But if you move, if you're tweaking the pipe, or-
Yeah, you can still bend it. If it's negative 40, you're going to be working a lot harder to bend it, but you can still bend it. It gets stronger as it gets colder, but it will not fracture. Yeah, so you're going to have to work a lot harder to bend it when it's super cold like that, but it's still, yeah, still doable. So, because it's so ductile, you don't need a lot of fittings with polyethylene pipe. But next slide? One more. Oh, impact resist, I thought I put bend radius next. Go ahead. So this is actually impact resistance, just another demonstration of the ductility of HDP pipe. This is a bucket drop test, where we took four-inch diameter cast iron PVC polyethylene pipe, and the polyethylene, of course, had a fusion joint in the middle, and we dropped a 170-pound bucket from about three feet. There's the first one, shattered. C900, shattered. That was a DR 14, by the way, that's a 305 PSI pressure class pipe, very thick wall. Here's a DR 11, 200, oh, 13.5, so 160 PSI pipe. Notice the bounce? Does not shatter, does not break, it absorbs impact. Again, those pipe materials are much stronger than ours. Their tensile strengths are twofold, fourfold higher than polyethylene. It's not about strength, it's about ductility. It's about being able to take a blow, take a hit, take ground movement, and not lose water. Go ahead, next slide? So cyclic performance, HDP pipe, with other pipe materials, you need to take into consideration things like fatigue, and fatigue failure. HDP pipe does not fail from fatigue. This is a study out of the University of Texas Arlington, where they took a piece of pipe, 10 million surge cycles, from a DR, sorry, from 125 PSI up to 250 PSI, so two times its pressure rating, for 10 million cycles, and it did not fail. So, this again, fatigue is not a failure method for polyethylene pipe. Next slide? Surge pressure, this is where we're also different than ductile iron and PVC. Their surge allowances is actually the exact same, they have 100 PSI allowed over their pressure class. HDP pipe is two times its pressure class for surge allowance. So if you have a DR 11, which is very typical for a water system, it's a 200 PSI working pressure rated pipe, you can have surges up to 400 PSI, and it doesn't hurt the pipe. Hit next a couple more times to get to the next slide? Oh, max velocity, let's talk about that for a second. Does anybody off the top of their head what max velocity it takes to get 100 PSI pressure spike in ductile iron pipe? Jonathan? I'm sure everyone knows, right? It's two feet per second, that's it, two feet per second, that's 100 PSI pressure spike in ductile iron pipe. In PVC pipe, it's about a 60 PSI pressure spike. Two feet per second in polyethylene is 13 PSI. So even with, with polyethylene being so ductile, it acts as a giant shock absorber. So you have a water column going down, it takes 14 feet per second to get to its max allowable for DR 11. When are we seeing 14 feet per second in the city? You know, even if it was a bad fire situation, you're really not going to be seeing that high of water velocity. But the pipe itself works as a huge shock absorber for water surge. Uh, next, please. Uh, so flexible, you can squeeze it flat. You can completely stop the flow in the pipe by squeezing it shut. That's how flexible the pipe is.
And it will come back.
It will come back to round. So again, the other guys, they're stronger, but we're much tougher. Next slide, please. That was a 24-inch pipe, by the way, that's 24-inch diameter. Uh, bend radius, wow, I really buried this down here, why did I put it so low? Bend radius, incredibly flexible. Think of a typical eight-inch dip-sized pipe, you can actually wrap it around a standard 40-foot cul-de-sac with zero fittings, and still be able to tap it and provide services for every house on that cul-de-sac with not a single fitting for the polyethylene pipe. That's how flexible it is. PVC, on the other hand, 12-inch PVC, 275-foot bend radius, this is the reason we can get away with lower costs, because we're not spending money on fittings. I'm sorry, Garth. I know you sell a lot of fittings, but we don't, we don't use a lot of fittings. Next slide, please. Yeah, this guy didn't get the memo on water shut-off day. So it's incredibly flexible. This is a very common scenario, where you're welding a very long length of pipe together above ground. HDP pipe is joined out of the trench, and then it's placed in the trench when it's fully joined. A lot of the time, you're installing it using trenchless technologies, directional drilling, pipe bursting, things like that, but it's very, very good to use just open cut as well. Next slide? Fully self-restrained, again, the joints are as strong as the pipe itself, so there's no need for thrust blocks for directional changes. No thrust blocks at all are needed. The only time you're using any kind of a concrete thrust block is if you're transitioning to another material. For example, if you're inserting HDP pipe into the bell of a ductile iron pipe, you need to restrain that joint. And a lot of time, that's done with a concrete thrust block. Next slide? Very high performance, you can actually get eight-inch, one more time? Eight-inch dips pipe on 500-foot reels. So you don't even have to get it in only stick form. So that's 500 linear feet of pipe in one roll, and that's eight-inch diameter. Well, that particular one's six, but they make it eight as well. Next slide? Uh, LCAs, I would, I never talked about LCAs, to be honest. I'm only bringing it up because it was such a hot topic last week, between the ductile iron guy and the PVC guy, it was so much fun to watch. Because the ductile iron guy gets up, well, pumping costs, you know, we're way more efficient. PVC guy gets up, well, most cities don't actually pump water, you know, most of it's gravity flow down to the, down to the house. And there's a little bit of truth on each side, and the ductile iron guy goes and says, you know, we're incredibly good because we recycle so many materials. Dipra's LCA doesn't include the original carbon cost of that steel and metal made in the first place. PVC guys, they, they miss all kinds of stuff, and actually the ductile iron guy, he hit it perfectly. And we miss a bunch of stuff too, because we don't take in consideration drilling the well for the natural gas that we make our pipe out of. So I'm just saying, when you go and read the LCAs, read them with a grain of salt. Everybody is very efficient, we have made these processes as efficient as possible to make sure that we do have a sustainable product moving forward, but I just want to give you a general heads-up on the LCAs. Everybody's biased, so. Good information in there still, though, so make sure to read them. Uh, next slide, please.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
During their, the written material they send us on lifecycle costs, they sure focused a lot on, from the time you start making the product, on, I was more curious about from the time we get the product, on-
Absolutely.
What our costs are going to be.
Yeah.
And that, neither one of those studies really addressed that.
Mostly because there's so much variability. We don't know how you're going to be putting the pipe in the ground, is it going to be open trench? Are you in a part of the country that's bearing it eight feet, or a part of the country that's bearing it two feet? There's just so much variability that it's really hard to put it into an LCA. Uh, there's just so much variability that it's really hard to put it into an LCA. Um, the general consensus is the plastic pipes are cheaper, uh, to install just because of the general price of the pipe. And, uh, and, and then there's no maintenance on either plastic really going forward after that. Uh, if you have bad installation on PVC, you will get failures, and you'll get expensive failures. HCP pipe, if you don't weld it right, you'll get expensive failures, you know, so there's, that's the same on both. So, plastic pipes will always be cheaper to install in the first place and run for a long period of time. Um, but the ductile iron guys, you can put whatever you want in the trench. That's really the biggest benefit that I'll tout for ductile iron. They say it all day. Whatever you took out of that trench, just throw it back in. It's fine.
What are the bedding requirements for?
Exactly the same as PVC. So, uh, you're gonna be using a lot of road base, a lot of three-quarter minus, uh, sand if you want to. Sand is not required, by the way, at all. Um, eight-inch, really twelve-inch and down is one-inch rock size and smaller. And then you can get up to about a two-inch rock size at about twenty-four-inch diameter pipe.
Thank you.
Yep. That was one of the big things, was the rocks puncturing and all of that.
Yeah. So this is-
If you watched this, you saw the fun back and forth, so. That, and I know I've talked to some of the council, that's a concern as far as the installation process and inspecting it and the costs with that. Ductile doesn't seem to have that, because like you said, whatever you took out, you can throw back in.
But the, the way I'll argue against that for the ductile iron guys is-
Just don't, don't be biased. Just give me the real scoop.
This is, this is on what I'm doing. So the, the downside of the ductile iron, putting whatever you want back in it, is they're covering it in polyethylene, uh, to, to inhibit corrosion. You guys heard about that. Whether it's the bag polyethylene, or it's the V-bio, which is literally a, a heat shrink film on the outside of the pipe. If you take those large rocks and cobbles and just throw it back in on top of the pipe, you have now punctured and damaged that liner. What happens when that happens? You now get water into the casing. You now get pit cell corrosion. So, I know that they have that great idea, just throw whatever you want back in the trench, but I would never advise that for any pipe material. Really, we should be, if we're using native soils, they should be screened, two inches smaller on screening. If you have to bring in road base, just pay for it. It's cheap insurance to not have an issue in the future. So that's usually what I would recommend. I rec- I don't recommend putting native fill unscreened back onto even ductile iron.
You, you may be kidding me this. I don't know how much further into the thing we're going back to.
Oh, not much of this, I'm on this.
I have two questions for you. If this is so fantastic as it appears to be, how come you're not in ninety-five percent of the water market?
We don't have the capacity. So we're building new plants all the time. We build a new plant about every two years. And our competition is doing the same, about every two years. But because we participate in so many markets, we're being pulled every direction. And so, we got a huge black eye two years ago. Because the oil and gas market took off. When, whenever oil gets about eighty dollars a barrel, they start putting a lot of infrastructure as far as frac lines, new wells, in the oil fields. And when the oil field is paying three dollars a pound, and municipal's paying a dollar fifty a pound, you see where that pipe is going.
Sure.
And so to combat this, we have built more and more plants, and are trying to get ahead of this, so that we can stay in the municipal market and not all of a sudden have to tell them that we have twelve-week lead times. Because that's what killed us two years ago, and that's what gave us a black eye.
Yeah.
Because you can't tell a municipal guy, I'll get you a pipe in three months.
Nope.
They'll say, we'll just get a different pipe material. See ya. So we did all this preaching and all this converting for the last five, six years, and then all of a sudden they couldn't get piped for a solid year, and we lost a lot of it.
So my second question, in that ten percent of market share that you have of water, or whatever that percentage is, do you have any, um, case studies that would show longevity and things within a municipality?
Absolutely. So our website itself, WLPlastics.com, has a whole section on the website of case studies. A lot of them are local to Utah, because I live here.
For water projects.
For water projects. Uh, Park City's a great example, by the way. Park City's been using, uh, HCP pipe in their water distribution systems for eight years now. Um, and that, that's exclusively polyethylene. Yeah, they do. They use chlorine. Uh, New Harmony, funny enough, very small, their entire system is polyethylene, just right there in New Harmony. So, there's a lot of polyethylene here in Utah, and all those case studies can be found online. The other resource I direct you to is called P E Pipe dot org, and they have a compilation of all case studies from all manufacturers, not just WL Plastics. All my competitors have their case studies on there. And it's very, uh, uh, searchable, so you can go in and say potable water, this diameter range, Western US, and it'll give you, you know, thirty to comb through.
I have one other question. I'm so sorry.
No, this is one here.
Out, out on Highway fifty-six, I've seen your pipes stored out there, and sometimes you have lots stored, sometimes it's like, they're out of business, because it's all gone. Uh, do you have any issues with exposure?
No. So because the pipe is black, it actually has a carbon black additive pigment. That's what makes the pipe black, but it's actually a UV inhibitor. Uh, so you can leave the pipe outside, you can actually install it above ground. Hundred-year design life, doesn't matter if it's buried or above ground. It does not degrade from UV.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and by the way, the main reason when you see lots of pipe out there is because we cannot get trucks to save our lives right now. It is, we're still sending fifteen, sixteen trucks a day, but, man, getting trucks is difficult.
You haven't figured out how to run tracer wire on it yet, have you?
Uh, not from the extrusion process, but, yeah, we just tape it in the field, just like PVC.
I know. That was just, that was our question when we were out there, is if you were gonna figure that part out.
No, and I played with the kind of ideas, and I've played also with the, uh, the-
If anyone was gonna figure it out, I would expect you to mess with it, figure it out.
No, I decided to go a different route. I like the, the three M locator balls, but I was trying to incorporate the three M locator balls into the wall of the pipe. You know, you know what I'm talking about, right? Three M locator balls? Oh, it's a, it's a, uh, what are the things everybody's worried that they're gonna put a microchip in us? What are those called?
Vaccination?
Vaccine?
No, my goodness. What's a conspiracy theorist? Come on, you guys. No, radio ID chips, that's what they're called. A radio ID chip. So radio ID chips, you put it in a little plastic ball, three M, the company sells them, and you can program it with what the pipe diameter is, how deep it is, what's going through it, and you drop it in the trench next to the pipe. And so when locator guy comes out, eight-one-one, he gets that three M ball, oh, well, this is a twelve-inch water pipe buried three feet down. It's all right there in that wall, in that ball. And you can get them different colors for different applications. Three M locator balls. Look it up, they're fantastic product.
So why don't you put, figure out how to get that?
I'm trying.
Is there research that you've done in particular? Have you done any research on long-term monitors? As in cold and hot, the total rate between that situation will be negative forty-five?
Yeah, so the colder, the better in our particular case. We like the cold waters. Uh, the cold waters increase the pipe, pipe strength, and it increases, uh, corrosion resistance. Uh, so we like the colder temperatures, um, but really, they're in the middle. Most US utilities are right about sixty to sixty-five degrees. That's your water temperature and ground temperature for ninety percent of the US. But we can handle the high temperatures as well. We can do pressure up to a hundred and forty degrees Fahrenheit. Yeah. Yeah, and that's one of the other reasons that we like to restrain when transitioning to different materials. Because if all of a sudden you get a cold shock, let's say instead of pulling out of the well, you're pulling out of a tank, it's above ground on a cold day, and you shock that pipe, if you don't have that transition point restrained, you're gonna get a shrink effect. It's gonna wanna try and pull back. And that could pull out of a bell. Yeah. See, I think I, I'd like one last slide.
Now, let's let him get through the rest of that, then we'll get to that.
Uh, American Chemistry Council, ooh, this is the big one. So PVC guy came, and he's like, hey, um, we're just gonna mention that you should totally, doesn't matter if you even use us, you should totally have PVC pipe on your bid allowance. And the reason that is is because American Chemistry Council came out with a study a couple of years ago that showed that just by having a competitive product on your bid, whether you were gonna use it or not, brought down ductile iron's price by thirty-two to thirty-five percent. If they have a town that they know they own, that they only use one product, they will always sell that product into that town at a higher price because they know they have no competition. So just, I don't care if it's me, I don't care if it's PVC, I don't care if it's polypropylene, put another pipe on your spec sheet to bring down the prices for the city. That's it. That's my last slide, go ahead and last one. Um, so yeah, just choose, choose wisely. Uh, it's completely up to you guys. But I'm always open for a plant tour, fusion demonstrations. We can weld up to sixteen-inch diameter here in Cedar City. Um, anytime you guys wanna come out, I'm there, so.
Dustin, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, some of the, the contractors that install the pipe, when I talked to them about the HDP, they said they didn't really like it for in-town installation because of fusion, whatnot. They said long runs outside the city, they loved it.
Yeah.
Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So, in a, in a city situation where you're only really opening up twenty feet of trench box at a time, and you're covering with steel plates at night every night, when I send you a fifty-foot stick of pipe, that's one single piece, or a forty-foot stick for municipals, more average, um, it's a little more difficult to deal with because you have to open up that much more road to be able to install that piece of the pipe. So that's the biggest reason, because the pipe lengths are longer and you are having to fuse it. Excuse me. Um, so it, it is a little harder that way, but what I usually recommend when we're working in cities is pipe bursting or directional drilling, where we're going to assemble that pipe string, maybe in a park, don't tell the leisure guy. Uh, we're gonna assemble that pipe string in maybe a park or a parking lot somewhere, and we're going to drag it into place the morning we install it, and pipe burst it through the existing pipe, or maybe directionally drill it next to the existing pipe. Um, I usually recommend that you abandon, uh, whatever you have there, and either pipe burst through it or directional drill next to it, and then you have a five-hundred-foot new piece of pipe installed in the ground at once. And that way, you're not going twenty feet at a time down a city street.
So I get your process of fusing your long lines, but what, what is the process to tap a service?
Exactly the same as PVC. So you'll use a tapping saddle. Uh, well, the PVC guys will say you can directly tap a PVC pipe. I do not recommend it. Uh, use a tapping saddle, the same as PVC, and then you'll run your tap down through the polyethylene pipe. Literally, the tools are identical. You can use copper corpse stops if you want steel on polyethylene pipe. Um, everything's the same for tapping. If you wanna get really into polyethylene, you can have polyethylene mains and polyethylene service lines connected with polyethylene saddle fused, uh, joints. So the entire system becomes completely welded from the house all the way to the water main, and you have no copper corpse stops. You use, uh, polyethylene ball valves, uh, that are, that are fully welded in and leak-free.
How, how do you price this? I'm trying to figure out, uh, when you're trying to do a comparative of this pipe costs this much and this pipe costs, because you roll it, you fuse it, you extend it. How can we compare cost analysis?
Well, I love to just go off of just the cost of the pipe, because we're cheaper, so I like that one.
But for fifteen feet, ninety feet, a hundred and twenty feet, I mean, what are you talking?
Well, yeah, and, and P, the reason we're cheap right now is because PVC's in such a mess with the storm in Texas. Polyethylene recovered a lot faster than the PVC chemical assets down there. Um, but-
But that will adjust over time.
It will, and they're about, they're really, eight-inch dips versus eight-inch poly, like, it's very similar when it comes to PVC pipe on cost. And obviously, we're, we're both cheaper than ductile iron. Uh, the biggest cost benefit for polyethylene pipe, where you're gonna start seeing that thirty percent cost reduction in every job you do, whether it's trenchless or open tre- open cut, is when your contractors get comfortable with the product. Once they understand how to install it, once they understand the benefits. For example, we don't need to open up a wide trench and stick a trench box in it, because we're not putting people in the trench. All of your joining is done outside the trench on the ground. And so all you're doing is opening up a trench wide enough with six inches on both sides of the pipe to be able to get material in there to compact into the haunches. Your trench widths are much narrower than other materials, because we don't have to put any people in the trench. So you're not having to trench box every time you go to do a twenty-foot stab, uh, spigot joint. So that's a hu- so again, once the contractor learns how to use the material, and gets comfortable with it, and you get multiple contractors in town that know how to use it, you start seeing easy thirty percent reduction in prices of water projects. Especially if you get some contractors in town that do pipe bursting. That's where the real money savings comes in. Oh, it's been fantastic, you guys. Any more other questions? Again, plant tours. I have a way better presentation than this one I can give you at my office.
I'm gonna call you. I want a plant tour.
Sweet.
They're fun.
I'll drink.
Yeah, it, and it's such a simple process, like, we're one of the smaller manufacturing sites in town. We have fifty employees, about thirty thousand square feet, but we put out sixty million pounds of product a year. It, we make a lot of pipe, and we do up to fifty-four inch out there, which is always impressive to see come off a line.
You can ask your question, then I'll have Robbie come up.
Tom, good evening, Tom Jett. Uh, first, let me say that this is probably the most incredible presentation I think I've ever heard, but he lost me when he started showing all the calculations up there. The, um, I, like Scott Phillips, I'm, I'm trying, a little bit confused on apple to apple for final install- for final end product on cost, you know, similar, we'll call it eight-inch to eight-inch to eight-inch. And I've heard what he said about the trenching, and people don't have to be inside the hole, and, but is the end result a cheaper, a less, a less expensive method of, of doing so?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and, well, I guess he says initially, what maybe-
With maintenance costs so low for plastics, it really is, it's a cheap system to maintain and keep.
All right.
Yeah, there's not a lot of maintenance costs. Nothing's growing on the inside. You're not worrying about cathodic protection.
Dustin, will you come back up to the mic?
Yeah. Yeah, you're not worried about cathodic protection, you're not worried about, uh, any kind of corrosion. Uh, so there's really not any maintenance. You know, you're, if you're, especially when you start getting into polyethylene valves, uh, from AVK, you don't have to even go out and exercise your valves. It, it's an incredibly low maintenance, uh, system.
Then I, I guess the second question is, you made a comment of, of, uh, PVC pipe is seventy to, seventy-five to seventy percent of the market. That's both wastewater and-
That is correct.
So how much of the industry is PVC strictly water?
Hmm, it's gonna be lower than that number because, um, ductile iron has a much larger presence in potable water.
She's gonna want you to go to the mic, because this is being public string.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, so ductile iron has a bigger chunk of the pie, um, when it comes to potable water distribution. Um, they've been around a long time. People know how to use it. They know how to fix it especially. You know, um, the ductile iron guy spoke about, uh, cracking, uh, with the old cast iron pipes. It'd be a circumferential clamp, a crack. You put a band clamp on it, you're fixed, you're on, on your way. Uh, PVC pipe, when you have failure, it's gonna be a longitudinal crack, which means you're removing and replacing a long length of pipe for a failure. More expensive, a little more tedious. Uh, polyethylene pipe, when it fails, it'll be a slit or pinhole leak, and so you go back to your band clamps. And you just cover your, your pinhole leak with a band clamp.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Do you have to have a new piece of equipment to do?
No, no, you're using the same fittings you have for ductile iron or PVC. Um, if you wanna get super fancy, they make some of them with spring washers.
Ooh.
Yeah, new technology.
This is, I knew your presentation would be entertaining, if nothing else.
Well, I try. I try. Yeah. The, it's, it's, it's so much fun. I feel like I'm getting into like this new industry that's just ripe for growth, and we've been around for fifty years. You know, we're not the new kid on the block. Everyone's like, oh, you're, you're that new polyethylene pipe I've heard about. Oh, we're not new. We've been around fifty years. It hurts me.
Can I ask another question, please? Um, one of the concerns that I have is, on the maintenance side of it for our water department, we can't be having this kind of fixture for this, and this kind of fixture for this, and this kind of fixture for this, because it's, it's a storage issue, it's a, it's just all kinds of problems, you know? So I, I just wanna know how we can perhaps look at giving some options, but not burden ourselves with so many other things that we need to carry in inventory that becomes a burden to us.
Yeah, the good thing is, if you were to go polyethylene and you wanted to start using that pipe material, and really wanted to get into it, the good thing is, is where-
We still have a lot of ductile iron in town that we have to repair and maintain.
And that's the good part, is that any fitting that can be used on a polyethylene pipe can be used on a ductile iron pipe. But it's not always vice versa. So if you have a ductile iron fitting, it may or may not, depending on the manufacturer, be able to repair a polyethylene pipe. But if you decided to go all polyethylene, then you'd start purchasing your repair fittings for polyethylene pipe, and then they could then be used on ductile iron.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. So when it fails, so there's gonna be two types of failures. If you get a pinhole leak in a hundred years, that's a band clamp. Super easy. You pot hole down, band clamp, you're, you're rocking. Uh, option B is gonna be, you had a contractor that not, did not fuse it well. They didn't perform the butt fusion process correctly, and that fusion joint comes apart. Then you have exactly what you have with ductile iron, a circumferential crack. Band clamp, you're back rocking and rolling. So the failure method for that is very, very similar.
I said, oh, just had one more quick question.
Tom Jett, the, will you? Last week, it was, it was brought to the attention, I think by the ductile industry, ductile pipe side said that you need, you need to bed the PVC and what, I can't remember how much sand.
He said sand, yeah, which is not true, but-
Yeah, and, and-
Partially true again.
Yeah. Well, do we have, you don't have to really bed PB, uh, ductile, as long as you're not sitting on a jagged rock or something. But do we, with the, with the PVC, do you have to bed it the same way as it was alluded to by the ductile industry?
So, uh, again, Dustin, Dustin likes WL Plastics. I don't know if I need to do that after we switch. It's good.
Yeah, it's a matter.
So again, polyethylene pipe and PVC pipe are going to be installed the exact same way. We use the exact same ASTM standards for burial. The benefit of using HDP pipe, if you are putting a non-native or like a big rock back on the pipe, is you could still get a stress failure, just like they talked about at PVC. You could get a stress fracture in PVC. The big difference is, with polyethylene, you get a stress puncture, which means you have a small hole, you remove the rock, you put a band clamp on it, you're rocking and rolling again. If it's PVC pipe and you have a rock impingement, you get a longitudinal split. So that's a big difference. So even if you did bed it improperly, improperly, and then had to dig it up in twenty years because you have a rock- So that's a big difference. So even if you did bed it improperly, improperly, and then had to dig it up in twenty years because you have a rock impingement, it's going to be a very localized failure.
So your failure rate relative to PVC?
It's almost identical. They're one point four per hundred miles in the ground. We're one point two. And that was an AWWA Water Research Foundation um study as well.
And failure rate to ductile?
Uh, failure rate to ductile is almost tenfold. It's like fourteen to one. But the big difference, though, yeah, it's, it's higher. Ductile iron, and that also takes into consideration cast iron, which is two hundred years old. It's fourteen to one. Um, but cost, 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 cost. PVC failure is ten times more expensive than ductile failure uh because you're replacing so much more infrastructure that the failure took out uh when the PVC pipe let go. So even though you're repairing ductile iron fourteen times more often, uh, the cost of a PVC repair is ten times more than a ductile iron repair.
You mentioned earlier in your presentation, the level of, uh, what was it, the C three that you went to on?
CC three.
So the CC three level, is that, that's, measures the chlorine resistance in the pipe?
Correct. Yep.
Is there something uh compatible that measures chlorine resistance in PVC or ductile iron?
Um, there's not because chlorine does not attack either of those materials. Uh, chlorine is inert for PVC and ductile iron. The big one you do have to worry about is the chlorine resistance of the gasket material they use, and that's where you'll get stung most of the time with chlorine. So that's the one you want to make sure they have a hundred year gasket. Um, especially if you're using chloramines instead of a chlorine. Uh, chloramines will take out rubber crazy fast.
So on those gaskets, is there a similar rating to the CC three rating or?
It's not. They don't talk about it.
So there's no way to compare the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they don't like to talk about that.
Do you have anything, Robbie?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, please. Yes, water guy.
I was figuring this one would get you excited.
I was thrilled, again, on the thing yesterday, um, that you're like, oh, I was really rooting for polyethylene before it was thrown out. I'm like, I got one guy. I got one guy.
I've used it, and I'm, I'm gonna be getting about another six hundred feet of it. So, um-
But you still have to say your name.
Robbie Mitchell, sorry. First question is, you said you can use a HDP fitting on ductile, but you can't ductile. Is that because of the gasket or what's the difference?
Gasket or spring washer. So some, Dustin Langston, some fittings use a thicker gasket to, uh, take into consideration the expansion contraction of polyethylene versus ductile iron. So you'll either have a thicker gasket or you'll have the spring washer on it to take that expansion contraction.
Second question. Um, you said it's rated for uh AWWA chlorine. So right now their requirement is just a detectable residual. They don't have-
Four parts per million max.
Okay. When we chlorinate our lines, we have two things. We can run, either run, make contractors run a twenty-five part per million for twenty-four hours. Or a slug dose of fifty parts per million for three hours. So if we're injecting that in there and letting it sit for twenty-four or, or three hours, is that going to start compromising the inside of that pipe?
Dustin Langston, uh, no, it is not. So what he's talking about is when you first put any piping material into service, you have to chlorinate that pipe, super chlorinate, uh, which is an AWWA standard, I think, C six fifty-one, uh, and you're going, sorry, we're water guys. Um, you're going to super chlorinate that pipe, and he's saying, if you do that to polyethylene, is that going to hurt it? Is it going to affect it? And it's not because there's not enough dwell time in that pipe. Even if they were uh to chlorinate it over the weekend and leave for a couple of days, maybe the next week, the water guy's on vacation, it's sat there for a week. It's not long enough of a duration to start actually breaking those molecular chains and hurting it. So you're not going to see chlorine failure from any kind of a, a charge when you first, uh, first put it in the service. So it's totally different from uh everyday use of chlorine versus a, uh, uh, initial uh cleaning of the pipe.
What about the winter time chlorine?
Well, in that case, you're using probably what, one point part per million, one point two?
No, we usually run, we like to run anywhere, sorry, Robbie Mitchell. We like to run between a point five and a point seven, depending on there. With our chlorine residual, we like to run. Like I said, AWWA, right now their standard is just detectable on springs only. We don't chlorinate any well water. But we try to keep ours right between point five and point seven parts per million.
Which is incredibly low. Uh, Dustin Langston again, um, hardly detectable, point five, point seven. Um, as long as it's lower than EPA maximum allowed, four parts per million, that's really what we're designing for. So if you had a water treatment facility that you wanted to use polyethylene pipe in, but in the water treatment facility you have fourteen parts per million, we're not going to recommend using polyethylene because that's above the allowable for potable water because that's during your treatment process. Uh, but for anything that's out in the system, distribution, transmission, you're going to be at that low residual, especially in a cold climate like Cedar. And you are using free chlorine, right? You're not using like a chlorine dioxide?
It's gas.
Yeah, yeah.
Was this the same as your PVC where it will mainly, it's not going to be the big main water lines?
Uh, no, we prefer the big main water lines. We like those ones. Um, twenty-four inch, any of that stuff, transmission, distribution. Yeah, we like it all. Transmission's the best. No fittings, narrow trench widths. You don't have to dig down for every service connection. And high, high pressures as well. Three hundred and thirty-five PSI pressure rating on the pipe.
I'm sorry.
No, please.
Dustin, my biggest concern is both with PVC and polyethylene is, as you get into the higher pressure ratings, the wall thickness gets much thicker, and so you lose the inside diameter.
Yep.
What's your counterargument to that? Because ductile iron does not lose the inside diameter.
No, they have literally a three eighths inch wall thickness from four inch pipe to forty-eight inch pipe. It's the exact same wall thickness. So we cannot counter that. Uh, you go to a larger diameter pipe, uh, larger diameter pipe, you're going to have a little bit more money on excavation. Um, and, but again, you're going to not have to maintain it. You're not going to have any corrosion. So there's still benefits, but we cannot argue against that. HDP pipe will have the thickest wall thicknesses of all. It's the thickest pipe of, of the three, of ductile iron, PVC and poly. So you will have to go up usually a diameter size. Or you go to more of a European mindset where you like the higher water velocities and you don't have to worry about um sediment buildup because you have the higher water velocities. But, yeah, there, there's really no comment against it. It, it's exactly true. If you want to get the same flow ID per ID, we do have a C factor of one fifty, so that is beneficial versus a ductile iron. But where they claim one forty, which again, I'm skeptical about, it's more like one twenty. Um, we can't compete, so you just go up a diameter. Pipe cost wise, you're still cheaper going up a diameter with polyethylene than a smaller diameter ductile iron.
Robbie, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. As long as, sorry. Robbie Mitchell, like I said, last week, my biggest concern was, I was pushing it because we do use it. We use it on spring lines. Um, we fuse it together, throw it in the hole. It does move with the ground. We don't ever have to worry about it. So my biggest concern with HDP was the chlorine problem that they were starting to have. So if that's taken care of and we can get over that, then I don't have a problem with HDP.
And your crews are comfortable with the fusing method and all of that?
We do. Um, yeah, like I said, we fuse it on the ground, up on the ground, and then we just roll it in about every hundred feet. So it just snakes in and out. It's going to be kind of like ductile. If we ever have to dig it up and repair it, then we're going to have to dig it up. Problem is, we can't fuse it in the hole, so then that's when we're going to be using the solid sleeve couplings to splice a piece into it.
Exactly right.
Okay, does the council have any other questions?
No.
I know you just had a lot of information thrown at you.
But I, but I do think Mayor and Light of all this information that, um, I hate to kick the ball down the road, but I, I think that we need to table this item until we can get some more um input and some specifications.
Digest.
Well, and so we can get some specifications of what we might looking at, might be looking at because I think it'd be premature for us to sit and vote on this tonight. Uh, just given this information that we got.
That a motion?
That is a motion from me.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we will table that.
I forgot you were there, Tyler.
Hey, Jonathan, I did have one, one question. What kind, do we have any kind of bedding on the ductile iron? What, what do we require per ordinance now?
It's a three-quarter inch minus.
Yeah, so literally same crossover to poly and PVC.
So when we've, when the council's tabled items in the recent past, you've asked for, you've also assigned a turnaround time. Would you like to do that with this item?
Yes, I think-
We have a little bit of leeway.
I think in the next, uh, if we could do this in the next two weeks at the next regular work meeting.
That would mean council, the staff would have to turn it around literally in the next two days.
Oh, well, then we, that's not doable now, is it?
We have until October. You have okay with the council?
Because the last-
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is an important decision. We want to make it.
We have five Wednesdays this month, so the last meeting of this month, we don't have council, or the last Wednesday of this month, we don't have council.
Yes, we want to give uh our staff and our engineering and our water department adequate time to digest and come up with some specifications or research that we can look at so we can vote on it properly.
Thank you.
And you're here as a resource to solve-
And one, one thing I would like to add real quick too, um, I think as, as we're looking at this, it'd be especially um important to look at uh alternatives across the spectrum so that wherever uh, wherever that cutoff is for PVC, if we feel like PVC can't go above a certain diameter, let's, especially at that point and above, look at HDP. I think there was a really compelling argument there that just having an alternative on the table, uh, especially for transmission lines and some of what this stuff to, to bring the cost down could really be helpful.
And you'll help get us that information as to, you'll even send Jonathan?
Yep, all those studies, and also, uh, we actually have a pre-written pipe spec that's in Word format, so you can just pull whatever you want out of it and just copy and paste. Yeah, I'm trying to make it easy on everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Yep, come up, Robbie.
Sorry, I have one more question. So when you change from gas-
Would be.
Robbie Mitchell.
Thanks.
So when you change your plan out here from gas to water, do you have to change the whole plan out? My concern is, if you don't have a big order for it, do you carry any on stock? Or do you have to wait till you get an order for so much pipe to change your plan out before you start making water? Or what's, what's your process there?
Uh, Dustin Langston, W Plastics, I have an industry secret to share with you guys. There's no difference in pipe. So-
There's a difference in color.
There's a color, which takes about twenty feet of pipe to change. Uh, very easy to go from a yellow stripe to a blue stripe. Um, and then the print line is changed. So you're, instead of putting gas markings on it, you're putting water markings on it for NSF sixty-one and whatnot. But it's actually the exact same pipe dimensionally, pressure class, it's the exact same.
We figure out how to put a tracer wire inserted into it?
Maybe. The hard part, I can put a tracer wire in it. Piece of cake. I can't get the tracer wires to join during the fusion process. That's the hard part.
I have faith that you'll figure it out.
I'm on it. I'm on it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, but yeah, there's, there's no change. Uh, we also stock water sizes, uh, water sewer sizes, the smaller eight inch, twelve inch. The stuff that's very frequent for municipalities, we do stock.
Yes.
Garth Green, uh, it's been fifteen years since I attended AWWA and listened to the, the workshops. It's held every June. Um, it is, uh, is open. I assume we're members of the AWWA?
I'm not, but that's a good idea. I think Robbie is, yes.
I, I think that it's valuable to go to the industry, to listen to manufacturers and salesmen and, and, and vendors uh, tell you what they want you to hear. I think it's very valuable to go. And with the delegation to their show, I, I think it's in San Antonio in next June. Uh, I, this is a major, major decision you're making which will affect Cedar City for decades, literally. If you, if you change and go, think how long we've been doing ductile iron. And if you change and go to a new product, you really need to know, and more so than, than a, a council making these kinds of decisions. The first people that ought to make these kinds of decisions are the engineers and the people who work with it, and they ought to make a recommendation. And there, there ought to be, I, I, I was in the industry for so long, and I got so frustrated with people who would make decisions because their favorite salesman told them what was the product that he wanted them to, to buy. And, and that wasn't always necessarily the right product. I was interested that Dusty said something about AVK. Well, what's a product we distribute and have forever that, that does have fittings and valves that go directly, fuse right into the, the, uh, the, the HDP pipe. But honestly, I haven't been a member of the AWWA for fifteen years, but I've gone probably eight or ten times, and it would seem to me that a delegation, to make this kind of a decision, you ought to authorize a delegation to go to the AWWA show, sit in the workshop, split into groups of two, and study the products, listen to all the manufacturers, and listen to all of the, the, uh, the reports, talk to cities, eat their lunches, and talk to other cities and see what they're doing and, and find out, make sure that you know, and I'm, I'm not saying the council should do that. I think the staff should do that, and they should go and they should come back with a, a recommendation. And then you should vote on that recommendation instead of trying to figure out what is going to be the best product for them to use based on three, uh, very, three very good products. Nothing wrong with any one of the three products. Except for, we, we move forward in life, not back, and, and we need to look forward. Uh, as, as administrators of the city, you need to be looking down the road twenty to fifty years. And you need to make decisions that you honestly think will be better. And if you're expert at that and you know what you're doing and you heard all of the points and all the arguments and all the pluses and minuses, then that's great. Uh, if, if you're really in that, but if you're not, I think it's best to send the engineers and the work, your waterworks people and, and let them hash it out and ask all the questions that they want to do on a trade show. It's exhausting experience. The show lasts four days. You walk that show, your shins hurt so bad before you're, you're through. You can't stand it, but it's hard work. But at least then they should make you a recommendation and know why they made the recommendation to you, and you make the decision moving forward for a very, very long time and a complete change. Will it be difficult? Can you expect the contractors in town to just all of a sudden know how to do HPE pipe? They're, they're not going to be really excited about that. They just want to do what they've always done, get it done, get it out of there. They don't want to, they don't want to do those things, and I understand that. And, and if you make that decision, you input on those people that new procedure, that new pipe, and, and you're going to expect them to perform under that new pipe. And you're going to tell them how to bury it and how, what to do and how, what to do in this case and what to do in that case. And they're going to have no, and they're going to not like it particularly. They're going to complain if you change to something that they're not familiar with. If you give them what they've always had and always wanted, sure, they're happy, but it might not be the best thing for Cedar City going forward. So I'd, I'd go to the AWA, I'd, I'd table this thing, clear tells, I mean, you, you can do whatever you want, but, but I'd table it and tell you, had a chance to, to, these are great guys. That's, that's been an amazing presentation. That Dusty grew up across the street from me. He's a very, very ambitious and intelligent fellow, and he's here. And last week, we were going to ignore him. We're going to ignore WL Plastics. We were trying to make decisions based on, on ductile and, and uh PBCC nine hundred. And uh, I think you've done a good thing by at least listening to him. You all seemed to have a different look on your face. And last week it was, gee, we're not even going to consider HPE because of chlorine. Well, you know, that's interesting. You, you can't, that, that wasn't, now that isn't even the final comment, is it? Now we're thinking totally different. We need a lot more study on changing an entire piping system for a city going forward. Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to item number seven, a resolution revising the city engineering standards for road cross-sections with planter strips.
So this is a continuation of the discussion from, from last week. There was a few comments made last week regarding the tree canopy. The uh, how close the trees could be planted to each other. In my discussions with Wade Orm, the um, the root system goes out about one and a half times the canopy. So if you have a ten-foot canopy, the root system can grow out, or can be about fifteen feet in diameter. I felt like that was a good compromise to try to not get the canopy too large to where your root system just gets almost unmanageable. And then I've, I've left in there the root barriers which would protect the um, infrastructure, the curb, the sidewalk, and also the curb uh, from getting undermined. I've also left in there that no trees can be planted closer than ten feet from water and sewer laterals. With a ten to twelve-foot canopy, that would still protect the uh, water and sewer laterals from being compromised. And then I've also left in there having the top- And then I've also left in there having the topsoil, which would encourage the roots to grow deeper down into the soil. So I just present that to the council for your consideration.
Well, I for one think the adjustments probably make a great deal of sense, and I think it's, I think it's a compromise that still allows us to get some sense of a shade and a canopy on streets if this is so chosen to do. And again, to remind everyone, this is just providing another option for development. It doesn't have to do this, they can still go back with the traditional curb gutter sidewalk, but this would be an option. So I think this is a pretty good option to allow us to have this in our engineering standards.
How does Public Works feel about the changes? Are they still pretty adamant that they wouldn't want us to do this, or how do they feel with these modifications?
I apologize, I did not have time to discuss it with Public Works, so I don't know, I don't know their official position on this. If you'd like me to go back and discuss it with them further and come back at the next meeting, I can do that.
Well, they made it pretty clear in the opening meeting that they didn't want it disconsidered at all. Now, I don't know if that may have changed, based on these modifications and guidelines, I don't, I don't know. They did say, if you recall in the one statement, and I can't remember if it was Director Marshall, or whether it was, I can't remember, yeah, Hunter, maybe, that if we were to consider this, to please put in some language in there that could help protect them, and I think this has done it relative to the heights and the canopy and the, and making sure that it's trimmed at a certain height for the garbage trucks and snow removal and that sort of thing. So I think we've tried to respond to that, so I think it would be a good option for our city to have.
So would you like a, make a motion?
I would make a motion that, I would make a motion that we adopt the details of R4D for the cross-section, road section with planter strips, as outlined by our engineering department.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll start with Councilman Adams.
Nay.
Councilman-
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Ooh. Substaining. Now, Mayor. Um, aye.
So that one passes 3 to 2. Okay, item number eight, an ordinance repealing a portion of city ordinance 1209-20-1.
So in December of last year, the council passed updated ordinance to our planned unit development ordinance. What that, aware for statement at the end stated that a previously plotted phase would continue to the next. So this just strikes that language. Any future planned unit development would fall under the ordinance in place at the time of application, consistent to the vesting ordinance that the council passed a couple weeks ago.
Did that give them two years? Am I remembering right?
Well, so, yeah, two years would be the expiration date, if they came through and got approval, but they would vest in whatever the ordinance says at the time-
Whatever's there, but then they have two years.
Correct.
That they would be covered.
Yeah, each phase vests when it comes through. And each phase, once it vests, it has a two-year window to give time.
That vesting includes going to planning commission, paying the applicable fees, that sort of thing, correct?
That's the vesting date, yeah.
If they get another phase in after an ordinance change, then that next phase has to update.
Correct, okay.
Motion to approve the changes on that ordinance?
I would second that motion.
All right, we'll start with Councilman Hartley.
Aye.
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 That passes 5 to 0. And an ordinance clarifying vesting rights of residential development overlays, RDOs in the city master plans.
So this just clarifies that approved RDO does not vest in city master plans, as we need to amend those for the betterment of the city, we can do so, and RDOs will have to adjust.
I would make a motion to approve this ordinance clarifying the vesting for the residential development overlays, as outlined.
Second.
All right, we will start with Councilman Adams.
Aye.
Melly?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.